Good morning. It's Wednesday, July 26, 2017. It's nine o'clock. We're in the Senator hearing room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning. Our first item is always public comment. No one has signed up to speak. Take advantage of that, so we'll move right to the consent calendar. And Commissioner Carlson, I'm told it's you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will move today's consent calendar. All three items are under the Sheriff's Office. First one is to approve Amendment Number Five to the Contract for Services with Summit Food Service, formerly known as Consolidated Food Management, Inc., to add $1,042,019 and extend through June 30, 2018. Approve Amendment Number Seven to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Bureau of Land Management to add $28,092.58 for patrol services for years 2017 through 2018. And approve Amendment Number Eight to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Bureau of Land Management to reduce funding by $17,639.62 for years 2015-16 and $13,352.32 for years 2016-17 for unspent funds.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the motion approving the consent calendar. Any further discussion?
Just don't know what they would do without the 58 cents.
Yeah, I noticed that. Probably whole thing fall apart.
Right, exactly.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. We have three action items this morning. The first, it says under Finance, and I guess it would be, "Consider approval of an order reappointing Patrick Vance to the Marion County Budget Committee with the term ending June 30, 2020," says Jeff White, but it's Lisa Miller and Patrick. Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, Lisa Miller, Volunteer Services Coordinator with Business Services. I am here this morning to bring forward a recommendation for a reappointment for our Budget Committee. Mr. Patrick Vance has been a member of the Budget Committee for many years, and he's been recommended to be reappointed for another three-year term. Our Budget Committee is made up of three citizen members and, of course, our three Commissioners. The purpose of the Budget Committee is to set a recommended budget for all of our county departments' operations and capital improvements. So, Mr. Vance's term is coming to an end, and he's been recommended for reappointment for another three-year term ending June 30, 2020. And Mr. Vance is here to introduce himself and answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm just kind of stuck. So who recommends him? Let's get to the bottom of this.
I'm sorry?
Well, who recommends? You mentioned, Lisa.
It would be our Finance Department.
Okay. Well, I would've been happy to if they would. That's not the point. I'm just trying to clarify. Patrick, I am so glad.
Thank you.
You've been the Budget Chair and leading a process that seems complete and efficient and really enjoy working with you, so I'm happy. I wish it was a life term. I don't know why we limit it.
It may be.
Okay, well, that's fine then, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Ms. Brentano.
Anything you want to say?
Oh.
Only that, you know, it's the same thing I say to everybody as I talk about this stuff is it's really an honor to be able to participate as a volunteer in the different things people you are running into. With Lisa, you know, there are thousands of people that volunteer in Marion County that make things work, working in the parks and over in the behind juvenile at the gardening facility and on boards and commissions. So it's just, it's just real fun to be part of that process and to participate in government and to do it at my own schedule. You know, I don't have to volunteer if I can't make it. I don't, I'll do things that I'm capable of doing, and I enjoy it. It's an honor.
Great.
I really didn't pay him to say that, but he's definitely my volunteer advocate here now to recruit more volunteers.
Find another position for him. That might be his new job, ambassador for the county.
Well, to be a little candid, Lisa and I met last week to talk about another issue that I deal with, with one of the other things I do for the county, and we're scheming a little bit, so we may come back to you with some ideas.
Wonderful. But you know, you know all about the budget, so you know what's available. Maybe that's...
Well, absolutely. That gives me an edge up with wild scheming and dreaming. Gives me some reality-based scheming and dreaming.
All right. We'll certainly listen to it.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, a...
Just, thank you, Patrick. I know going through my fourth budget cycle, only being here about three years, but going through my fourth budget cycle and the way you handle the committee and chair it, you should actually maybe go over to the legislature and give lessons. Do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Would you go ahead and make...
Oh, so you want me to make a motion?
I do.
Let's see if I want to do this or not, right? No, just teasing. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve an order reappointing Patrick Vance to the Marion County Budget Committee with a term ending June 30, 2020, or life.
And I will second the motion with my thanks to Patrick also.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Patrick Vance to Marion County Budget Committee. Any further discussion? Last chance? No? All right, they'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is under Public Works. We consider adoption of administrative ordinance granting a Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment, ZC, CP. Yeah, Zone Change Comprehensive Plan, Case 17001, Sheriff Barron, I should know that better, Clerk's File 3, excuse me, 5742. So, getting through that, Joe Fenimore is here, and this is a follow-up on a hearing. Go ahead and just start it out.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you was an application to change a zone from exclusive farm use to acre residential with a 10-acre minimum lot size and to change the comprehensive plan designation from primary agriculture to rural residential on a 7.43-acre parcel located in the 11,700 block of Carl Road in Woodburn. I'm the Hearing's Officer, held a public hearing on March 22, 2017, and on May 18 issued a recommendation that the Board approve the request if additional satisfactory information was provided. The Board held a public hearing on June 28, and at this hearing, the applicant submitted the additional information needed. After considering all the evidence and information in the record, the Board approved the request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared, and notice of adoption was given on July 19. The ordinance is now set for formal adoption. There was one condition added to the decision that requires some right-of-way dedication along Carl Road and its intersection with Highway 99. The applicant did not object to that, had no concerns about that. The Board has the options of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to repair a modified ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends the Board adopt the ordinance as written, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If I could, Joe, I guess I've never looked for it before, but in the ordinance, you don't mention that condition, is that...
It's referred to as Exhibit B, I believe.
Okay. Let me see if I can find it.
Okay, the last sentence. Subject to the condition identified in Exhibit B.
Yeah, it's there.
You got it?
Thirty-foot property, one-inch corner radius.
Right, great. All right. Any other questions or thoughts?
I don't have any questions. This is always the tail end of the process, and it's where we wrap it up, and I'm glad we were able to resolve the missing information, and I think we can move forward with the motion if you're ready for that.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board adopt the Administrative Ordinance granting Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CCCP, Case Number 17001, Sheriff Barron, Clerk's File Number 5742.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the Administrative Ordinance for the grant, Zone Change Comprehensive Plan we've been discussing. Anything else? Are you none in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Joe. Our third item is kind of the highlight of the morning for me, I'm sure. We've given Cindy instructions to tell us just how exactly this all works, but we consider approval of the Public Improvement Agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal for $4,318.58 to provide furnishing and application of Type II slurry seal on various county roads, the city of Salem and the city of Silverton. And Cindy Schmidt is here to tell us about that.
Good morning, Chair Brentano, Commissioners. My name is Cindy Schmidt. I'm the Engineering Division Manager, and the item before you today is the potential approval of a slurry seal contract. It's an annual contract that Public Works does as a road treatment. And, you know, first of all, what is a slurry seal? Slurry seal is a form of surface treatment that we do to our paved roads, particularly in urban areas, where we have a contractor place a, what we call a slurry mixture, which is an emulsion or oil mixed with water and usually a sand or light aggregate material. And what that does is it's a rejuvenation treatment for our paved roads that seals that surface and puts a nice, consistent, gritty traction surface on the street and prevents water, excuse me, from infiltrating down into the pavement.
Cindy, if I could interrupt you right there. I had a call a couple of weeks ago, and I think I referred him to you, but it was on Corden Road, and we'd been doing some work, and his concern was, why are we, with all the road needs, why are we putting a new surface on a perfectly good and new road? So, just something we've just...
That was a chip seal, too.
Yeah, and in particular on Corden Road, that was a chip seal, and I'll explain the difference between the two here in just a minute, but the purpose of both those types of treatments is they're a rejuvenation treatment. The roadway underneath may be structurally very sound, and to the casual observer, look in pretty good shape, but the idea is that this lighter, less expensive treatment every five to seven years on a roadway will help seal that surface and keep it from degrading quite so quickly. The environment and the rain and the sun and everything is really pretty hard on our pavements, and so these types of treatments help reseal that surface and allow that structural section of pavement to last 15 to 20 years or more, depending on the traffic.
Something I don't know. I think I told them that it also improved traction. Do both those treatments help with traction, or would only the chip seal do that?
Actually, they both do. The chip seal is much more aggressive traction because it's got bigger aggregate in it. The chip seal is where you lay down a layer of oil, and then you put the chips on top of it, and then that kind of works in together, and then you seal that with what we call a fog seal, which is just a light shot of oil to sort of bind everything together. We tend to use chip seal treatments more in the rural area because the chips are a little more problematic. There's a lot more loose material that can get into storm drains and that kind of thing, and it's a more aggressive treatment on our higher-speed roads. You want that better friction surface. The slurry lends itself to urban streets where you have catch basins and things because it goes down as kind of like a paste, and you spread it on the street, and it has to set up a little longer, and so you have to keep traffic off of it, which you can't generally do for very long periods of time on our busier rural roads. So that's effectively what a slurry seal is, and typically Public Works does about $100,000 contract each year for our county roadways, but we look for opportunities to combine contracts with other agencies because there's some potential to get some better pricing because we have larger sizes of contracts. $100,000 contract is not a terribly big contract in this roadwork venue, and so we have combined this year with two different agencies to, excuse me, to get roughly a little over $400,000 contract. We share the costs of administering contracts, so there's savings for all of us involved there, plus we tend to get more competitive pricing. And in this case, this graphic shows that we have city of Silverton roads, city of Salem, as well as Marion County roads, and roughly dollar-wise and mileage-wise what each of us is bearing in this particular contract. City of Salem, of course, at a little over $200,000 is the largest player in this particular contract, but that's not always the case. But in terms of inspecting these roads, generally you'll have an inspector out there when it's going down to make sure the coverage is good and everything's done the way we need it done. City of Salem manages their own inspection. City of Silverton has staff to do inspection, but we work with them and assist them because they don't have a lot of experience with it, and then we do our own roads. And we bill our costs of time and investment and the administration portion to each of the other agencies in the contract. This next graphic just shows generally for the city of Salem, it's a little hard to read, but their slurry seals, of course, are scattered all around the city in those boxes. On the right, city of Silverton, they tend to have a fairly even distribution around the city of the roads that they're going to be treating this year. And in our case, all of the roads we're going to be treating are in northeast Salem, and you can see those roads there and how they distribute out in that northeast Salem area. The main street at the bottom of the diagram is Ward Drive, just to give you some perspective. The only project for Marion County's roads that's not shown on here is we're also going to be putting a slurry seal on our Silverton Road campus parking lots. They're all at that age where they're starting to show cracking and that kind of thing, and they would benefit from a treatment also. And then I've attached here a list of the roads, just to give you an idea. As you can see, a lot of them are cul-de-sacs. It's very common to use this type of a treatment on these little short dead-end urban streets. And in our case, most of our streets in this area are 34 feet wide. When you go to the city of Silverton, a lot of them aren't curbed, improved urban streets, so they tend to be maybe 20, 22 feet wide, and so they can do more mileage if their streets are narrower than you can with a wider street. So with that, I can answer any questions you have on the process or the contract at this point?
I don't see anybody else, but I do have one little one. So, is this delivered to us somewhere, or do we go get it somewhere? How does that work?
Well, the contractor actually does the application.
Oh, they do?
They do, yeah. So they've got specialized equipment that allows the water and everything to be mixed and actually applied with that equipment, and it kind of gets swept around on the streets. And so occasionally, we might provide a stockpile and a water source for them, maybe at our shops or a convenient place.
They take the whole operation flagging, et cetera, whatever they need?
Pardon?
They block the streets, flag them, or do we...
Yeah, traffic control is part of what they're providing to us, and then we amend that where we need to, and we do a lot of notification of neighbors simply because you do have to keep the traffic off of these streets for a period of time, and that can be pretty disruptive in these neighborhoods. So we do a lot of coordination with people, making sure they've moved their parked cars off the street and know that there's going to be, you know, maybe four hours that they're not going to be able to drive into their driveways, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or thoughts?
Well, thank you for bringing this forward, and I think it's good education reminder for people about how the road system works. It was interesting to me when you were talking about that phone call because Commissioner Cameron and I delegated that phone call to Commissioner Brentano.
Was that how it was?
So I think I came up first. It was after a board session, and Sarah was there and said, "There is a constituent on the phone, and he is demanding to talk to a Commissioner, and he will not hang up until he's talked to one. He's very upset." She just went on, so I was like, "What's it about?" She says, "Well, it's about roads." I said, "Sounds like Commissioner Brentano can handle that one." So then Commissioner Cameron comes up, and we consult, and sure enough, we both agree that it was Commissioner Brentano, but just the intensity of his concern about it really kind of highlights the idea that, and this has been an age-old problem, people are very interested in building new roads, you know, like, or new intersection or whatever, but the preservation part is very much below the radar screen for people. You know, they do not understand that it costs so much more to rebuild a road than it does to preserve it, so I think it's a good lesson for all of us.
I tend to liken it to doing like a moss treatment on your roof. You put a roof on your house, and you need to kind of keep the maintenance up on that long-term if you want to get your 25 years out of your roofing material.
Right, absolutely. That's a great analogy.
All right. Well, I guess my only comment is that the education, but also doing that right along with chip seal and then having the tour of some of our roads and understanding all the work that Public Works does to even get ready to do a chip seal or a slurry seal, it's like two or three years in advance, and some of the roads that I was shown said, "Okay, now we've got to put actually a two-inch asphalt layer over this because it's not ready for a chip seal." So, understanding that was really a good education for me, too. So that next time that guy, that constituent calls in...
I'll send you.
You can allow me to help answer that. So I guess it's my motion.
Please.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a public improvement agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal, Inc. for $403,318.58 to provide furnishing and application of Type II slurry seal on various roads, the city of Salem and the city of Silverton.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal, as we've discussed. Anything else? Hear anything? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, and thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sounds like I need to go out on one of those tours myself. I think I know and I don't. So, what's left to do this morning is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Tomorrow morning, July 27, at 7:30, we'll have a regional quarterly breakfast at the Home Place Restaurant, 1080 North First Street in Silverton. Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar review, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 9:00 with management update, same location, Silverton Conference Room. And then at 10:00, BOC CAO meeting, executive session if needed pursuant to ORS 1926602ABDHNI, also in the Silverton Conference Room. And then noon on Monday, the 31st, Serenity Lanes Open House. Location is Serenity Lane, 900 Liberty Street Southeast, Suite 120 in Salem. Oh, I'm not happy about this one. That Monday afternoon at 4:00, we have Fay Fagel, our Juvenile Director's Retirement Party. That'll be here in the Senator hearing room, first floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then Tuesday, August 1st, getting into it, 9:00 to 10:30, a work session on Hazard Mitigation Plan and Wildfire Protection Plan, Silverton Conference Room. Next Wednesday at 9:00, a regular weekly board session here at the Senator hearing room. That afternoon or at noon on Wednesday, the 2nd, Woodburn Marion County meeting at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. And then back to Salem for a 2:00 to 3:00 Capitol Community Television taping, CCTV Office Studio 2, 575 Trade Street Southeast in Salem. So that went rather quick. Learned about slurry seal. We're not supposed to chat, but I did see a Facebook post you had with Brock, and it looked like you have a playroom with, was that your room? He had, there were so many toys in there, is that...
It's a front deck that we have used for different things over the years, but now it is the vessel for toys.
I see that.
So, it's generally either really cold when it's winter out there or really hot when it's summer, so we just drag all the toys into the living room, and that's where you see three little tables.
I laughed at myself. I know you just took a truckload of one of your kids' stuff, but yet you have a whole room of toys yet.
Well, that was a year ago that you saw the post, though. So it's a little, it's a little bit emptier now.
Oh, it just came up this morning.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, it was a memory.
Oh, I didn't look.
Yeah.
Anyway, but I thought, isn't he there?
He is there.
I put it together, so I thought it was live.
Yeah, so he was there a year ago. A year ago was when he actually, I flew to Boise, well, my daughter flew me to Boise, met her at the airport, took him back, took him down, and then flew him back to Boise. So he was here all by himself. It was just totally Grammy time. It was great.
Oh, nice.
He had a wonderful time.
I did one thing kind of interesting. I had a, this weekend, I had a forest meeting with ONC, a phone meeting, so I went down and sat on the mouth of the Sletz, and I'm not, the modern world still amazes me, so my wife Tammy is visiting our granddaughter in Boston. So, we set it up, I finished my call, then I got on FaceTime, so they're looking at beaches in the Pacific Ocean, and I'm looking at Cape Cod.
Oh, interesting.
I mean, really think about that.
It's amazing.
Technology.
Yes, and she did wave at me, just so you know.
Yeah, we do FaceTime a lot, or instant, the messaging, the live.
That's beyond my capabilities, but maybe...
Well, I don't know how to set it up. I just can, I can go back to when they called me, and it says, "Call back," and I just hit that, and then I...
Okay, for FaceTime?
Yeah. Or, no, for, you go on Messenger, and you can do the video conferencing, video messaging.
On Facebook?
Yeah.
You do all that stuff?
Well, and so my kids do it because they can be like on the, like my one son can be on his computer, and then he can go on the, still have his phone and not use minutes and all that kind of stuff, so...
Okay.
I was just, I was trying to find our Facebook Live feed, and I couldn't find it this morning, so I'm not that good.
Oh, I thought you were my adult expert.
I may be a little bit above you on that, but not that great.
Quite a bit, thank you. But anyway, I just thought that was amazing, kind of fun if you really think about it.
Yeah.
But that's as far to coast to coast as you can get within Hawaii, I guess.
Pretty amazing.
I did several Facebook Live videos this weekend with the film crew that Travel Salem had up at Detroit Lake. They had, they had done rafting, they'd been to Opel Creek, I think, a week before. They're going around Marion County, all these places, and taking all this video, and then they're going to produce a two-minute video. They're doing it for Yam Hill, Polk, and Marion. Each one of us is going to have a two-minute video, some grant they got to promote places to go. Well, they were there for 24 hours, basically, more than 24 hours, just up in the Detroit Lake area, and they've gone to all these different places. They're going to take that down to a two-minute video. I doubt it. He didn't, he didn't get a release from me, so, but of course, as a public figure, I guess you can, they don't need a release, is what I told him, so...
So where will we see this? Will we?
We'll end up, yeah, we'll be able to see it, yeah. Travel Salem will have it on their website, and we'll probably link to it.
All right, anyway, what else we got left?
Ohio, just got back.
Oh, yeah, that's work-related. Okay.
It was, yeah. That was legitimate, right, with National Association of Counties Annual Conference, so I've been serving on the Board of that this year. So we had board meetings. They're kind of a lot like AOC board meetings, contracts, executive director update, that kind of thing. They elected a new slate of officers, so Roy Charles Brooks is the new president. He is, he's from Tarrant County, Texas, so Fort Worth area.
I didn't know that right off.
Yeah, and he came to Oregon to our stepping up conference. He was the NACO representative there. I didn't realize he was the first vice president when we talked with him there. So he had his daughter swear him in. It was really very sweet. They had his son, his wife, and his daughter all up on the stage, and his daughter, who looked like she was, I don't know, maybe somewhere between 16 and 20, did the oath of office for him. She was really very...
So do you move up in the chairs or anything?
Yeah, so, well, no, I don't personally.
You're done?
I'm, I'm just on the Board. I'm not an officer.
Oh, excuse me.
Right, so they have an executive committee, same as we do, and then people run for office. The second vice president race was uncontested, so Mary Ann Borgeson is her name from North Dakota, no, Nebraska, sorry, Nebraska.
I was going to say.
She's the new second vice president, and Gordon Creekshank is the Western Region Representative. He's from Idaho, Treasure...
It's a date name.
Treasure Island, Treasure County, something like that.
So, was there any interesting, other than paying bills, any interesting discussion or topics?
You know, they had a board forum where they talked about the issues that they're having around the nation with state legislatures particularly, and the federal government kind of is a metaphor for that. And they said generally their role is to look at the collective county voice and lobby the, you know, work our county interests at the federal level. But what they're seeing, and they wanted to have kind of input on it, is that there's kind of a statewide push to reduce the revenues for counties, reduce the role for counties, kind of a lack of understanding about what county's role is, the idea that we're just another special interest group. But it was very interesting to hear because, you know, we've run into that, particularly, and this was more several years ago when everything was being regionalized.
Health, they were talking.
Right, yeah, exactly. And so kind of diminishes the authority and the role of counties. A lot of these counties have authority to, well, I guess we have authority, too, right, to set the tax rate, although we may have more restrictions in terms of going out to a vote and those kinds of things. But they actually have had bills that passed that require them to go to the legislature to get permission in order to do that. And caps that have been set by legislatures for the property tax rates, which of course we've had Measure 5 and 50, so again, our situation's different. And, but then they, the particular state they were talking about pulled the cap that was set. I guess there was a vote by the people to set a cap and then it was found unconstitutional, but the legislature passed it. But they passed it for the local governments, but not for the state. And, and I'm thinking, well, that just sounds very similar, right? And so they were, they were just going through all of these different issues and the concerns that people had about trying to improve people's understanding about partnership and the fact that counties actually deliver services than in many instances the state directs them to deliver. And so then, you know, we're all serving the same constituencies. So it was that. We spent probably a good hour and a half.
If I could go back to that, so that we would have to have the legislature approve our budget or?
I think they would, they would approve it if we wanted to, to increase the property tax rate, if we had the ability to do that through, and, you know, I think some of the charter counties, I think Lane County actually increased their property tax rate. We can't do that as a general law county, I don't think, but.
Without a vote.
Without a vote, right.
We can do it with a vote.
Yeah, but I think Lane County actually did it by commissioners, by ordinance or whatever, at one point. And were, do you remember that, Glory? Didn't they do that? I think that's why Bobby Green was no longer county commissioner after that.
Right, that's, that's correct. They, that's a whole.
There are some charges to pay, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's, it was, well, they were seeing the timber revenues and the, you know, the secure old schools money going away and, and had a horrible situation. I saw a videotape that they had created where their judges were talking about the jail they had. They were down to, what, eight beds, 10 beds, something like that? I mean, it was, and just the constraints set on the public safety system. So they just went ahead and authorized that. But, and then, of course, the public has a right to.
Right. And then jail levy did go out for a vote and was passed and was.
The most recent one, not the one.
But they have a lot more authority to set fees and raise taxes.
But it just kind of raised the same issue that we've been seeing about whether or not state legislatures. I mean, some of the comments they talked about is that the state legislators viewed, said that they viewed themselves closer to the people than local government.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the reason was because they run every two years. And so they're always out talking to people. And we run every four years. This, this is a different state, but just telling you what was part of the conversation. And so, and then the other part that they talked about was the difference in the focus, where some of these national groups, they have National Conference of State Legislators, which I was in, went to a couple of those conferences, but they also have, can't remember the name of it. I think it's more on the conservative end of a, of a national organization where.
Alec.
Yes, that's the one. Where they, they're kind of developing nationwide kind of talking points and agendas and policies that are then being brought forward. And there was a woman there from Nevada that had been the Speaker of the House in Nevada and was, has just a new county commissioner. And she was talking about going to some of these seminars and how they said, here's some easy bills to pass and, you know, gave them a whole lot of tools for doing their job where she comes to NACO. And there's a lot less, I mean, there's training in the sense of workshops, but it's a lot less training around, here's what you can do at home in your own area. It's more collecting, you know, just sharing ideas across counties.
Is it partisan like I feel it would be then? Is that where they're getting these ideas? Like, because I know, you know, one state.
Right, it's, it's, yeah, it's pretty partisan.
Alec is pretty heavily, heavily conservative on that side. But, yeah, because, yes, there was several policies that I can name one legislator when I was in the legis, when I was in the House that would bring these things forward and try to get them through. And they were Alec-oriented bills that were templates and then he adjusted a little bit. She did quite a few of them, but.
And I'm sure there's, there's groups on the, on the other side as well that, that do the same thing. But just the idea that there's kind of, that the talking points that are starting to come across aren't bubbling up homegrown. There's kind of this whole nationwide kind of agenda that's being delivered by each side. And, but what it begs the question of is, what is the role of local government, cities and counties? So they're actually trying to collaborate more with League of Cities at the national level, too, to kind of figure these things out. Because our role clearly is that local government deliver services on the ground, close to the people. And we are a partner with state government that oftentimes finances the necessary funding for doing that. I mean, the discussion we had yesterday about parole and probation, community corrections, those dollars are all state dollars. And without those, we wouldn't be delivering that service. So, it was, it was just, it was a very, that was, it was a very interesting kind of thought-provoking conversation, I thought. So you asked, so that's.
Yeah, I know. I'm stuck on this, that they're closer to the people than we are. So you were both legislators. You talked in your campaigns. I know you went door-to-door. I don't know if you did any of that, but the numbers are so much less in a legislative district than a county, for example.
So that.
And that gives you a pure sample of, I guess, what, your district, but it doesn't give you a sample of what's.
I think, for me, because I had worked for county government, I'd been a contractor for Marion County, Lane County, Douglas County. So I had a sense, at least in some areas, about what counties did and a sense of the importance of counties. But I can tell you that my colleagues, many of them at the legislative level, really were not well-connected with their counties, didn't have a strong sense about what counties did at all, so.
Well, I'll never forget when I got appointed by three commissioners. That was the thing I took away from that appointment process that I went through, was that they said, you said, we've got good, good connections with our federal and our local city people, but we didn't have really good connections with the state legislature. And that's when I took that. And I started doing those breakfasts, or those coffees and stuff, so that there was that connection. But we brought in other people besides the county commissioners. Because I had no idea what county government was doing.
Jody's been doing the same.
Jody's been doing some of that, too. And there, I think there may be, there may be some realistic reasons why they feel they're closer, and they may be. Because you have, you know, the state of Oregon, when we did redistricting, your, your district was 63,000 citizens, right? We've got 330, 20 or 30, or whatever the number is. But, but as far as the, the stuff that we're doing every day, it's impacting people. And so we get a lot of feedback on that. And.
As a legislator or here?
No, here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know.
Because you're just putting words on paper in the legislature.
Right.
And hoping that some agency will send out money or create an administrative role or hire somebody.
And, and you can throw money at education and it's, people think that's, you know, well, I'm not going to say they think. It's, it's a good thing to fund education or to fund the healthcare programs or whatever. And then the little things that we're trying to get done that really impact somebody's life, you know, it's a small percentage of the population, those are easy to kind of push off to the side. You know, last night at Dick's, we were with.
I wanted to mention that. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, and we want to thank Dick Withnow. We gave him the Service Award last night. Distinguished, was it distinguished service award? But, you know, you had four agencies. You had CASA, you had Family Building Blocks, you had Liberty House, and Catholic Community Services. And all that work that they're doing at CASA, as Shaney stood up, we're mandated to have a CASA representative for every youth. Well, we're mandated, but we don't get funding for that. And it's not something that people understand or whatever. So you're out there with a nonprofit trying to help raise the money to be able to do the training and get these volunteers. So those things, the legislature passes it, but they don't have any responsibility for following through and making sure that it's happened.
Right, absolutely.
And we do, you know, at the county level, so.
Or if we don't, we really hear about it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, sounded like an interesting and helpful trip.
Yeah, so yesterday, well, Monday, I got up for a meeting that started at 9:30. So if I got up at 8, that would have been 5 here, right? And then I went to three or four meetings, went to the airport, caught a plane, flew to Oakland, caught another plane, flew to Portland, and got back here.
When?
That was all on Monday.
Where'd you fly? You went, you went from Ohio to Oakland?
From Ohio to Oakland Southwest Airlines and then Oakland to, Oakland to Portland. So that's why I was a little bleary-eyed yesterday morning.
All right. Anything else this morning? Since I can't think of anything, let's call this meeting adjourned.